Well, welcome. We continue the silly season. And those of you who don't know what that means, it's not as obvious as it looks. We're gonna start with somebody who's been fighting to get on the school committee for quite a few times. And finally is there. Determination, perseverance, we're really gotta be impressed. But let's, in case somebody doesn't know you, let's start with introduction.
Sure, introduction. My name is RJ Sheedy. I currently serve on the school committee here in Milford, and I'm happy to be here with you, Al.
It's good to see you on the committee. You tried so hard for so long.
I know. This is my third time running for the seat on the school committee. My first two times, as most of your viewers know, weren't so successful. I lost by about 100 votes each time. Then over the summer, an opening came, and I was able to be selected to be on the school committee, so.
That's still pretty impressive that your first time running, first couple of times running, 100 votes made the difference?
Yeah, it wasn't as much of a go away, we don't want you to serve. It was like, we like you, but you know, come back next time maybe, I felt the message was. And that's what I did. I came back the next time, lost again. I came back the third time, and I finally got the seat. And I'm hoping I can come back and serve a full term now on the school committee.
So RJ, you've been here before. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I think you should vote for me because I believe that I'm a hard worker. I'm dedicated and determined to serve on our school committee and do what's best for our schools. And hopefully the next hour, we can talk about why I think that's the case, and why I think I'm the best candidate for the job.
What do you think the three biggest challenges you'll face?
Look, the school is all about the needs and what we can do. The three biggest challenges: our facilities have needs, we have staffing needs, and our students have needs. Let's start with the first one, facilities. I think I'm gonna jump the gun a little bit on your question. But yes, Al, yes, there is a school coming, and there is a school on its way. Us in the district have made it very clear and very known that we want to see something happen with Milford High School. That's the next building that the district has determined that is on the block for work to be done. We've submitted two statements of interest over the past two years to the state. Both of them were not accepted by the state. From what Kevin McIntyre shared with our committee, that was expected to happen. I suppose it takes some time to submit and resubmit and resubmit. I guess kinda like running for school committee, run and run again and run again, for the state to kinda like see that the district has a need to have a new building in it. And that's where we are right now. We're continuing the statement of interest, but that's not good enough right now. We still have other school buildings that are at capacity, such as Stacy. And they're trying to put some work into Stacy, painting the walls, putting some new flooring in. That's some of the town has been super supportive of, which I'm thankful for. Makes my job easier as a school committee member to come and see your friends at the finance committee. We got some good friends over there. I'm happy about that. But we can't just sit back and wait for the statement of interest to be accepted. We have to maintain our buildings, make sure that they're good for our students and staff to go to every day. Second biggest problem, it's not a problem, but it's a need, is our staff. We have a great staff at our schools. Many of them have taught me and have shown me the way going through the school system myself. I've gone through Milford from a shining star all the way to graduating as a senior in Milford High School. I can name a whole bunch to you. Mr. Chuck Longo, Mrs. Antonellis, Mrs. Delaney, an art teacher that I always see still, Mrs. Madame Buckley, the French teacher there, Mrs. Mirabelle, the Portuguese teacher there, Jeremy Folsner, Chris Casalio. I can just name them all to you. They're all, they all meant a lot to me. And the staff is really one of the things that keeps our buildings running. We could have a whole bunch of kids show up someplace for a few hours. Without that staff and that leadership and that instruction there, that building's nothing, and those kids aren't doing anything there without them. We have a great staff. The problem is that we just need more of them. We need more staff to work with our students, to... And that then throws me into our third biggest need, is our students. Milford is not like a lot of the other towns around us, like Hopkinton, or Medway, or Franklin. Milford is a very diverse community with certain student population needs. We are a very high-needs community. We have a high population in EL students, English language students, special needs students, and high-income, I'm sorry, low-income students. And those needs bring in certain staffing challenges. We need more counselors on hand to deal with these students and to work with them on issues. We need better, we need more educational opportunities for them to basically teach them how they need to be taught. You know, somebody who's in special needs may not learn the same as you and me. Somebody who needs to learn English for the first time, as a 15-year-old, might not learn English the same as you and me did when, you know, I know, you know, maybe a little different than you. I know you came out of your house hearing this funny language, I think, called English. But you know, it might be a little bit different than like teaching RJ, I guess, how to read. And we need to make sure that like, you know, when we're teaching our students, we're teaching all of them to where they're at. And I say this with like an asterisk on it, like where they're at, because I don't wanna forget about the kids who are our top performers when I'm talking about our needs, our high, our high needs, our special needs.
Well, they're special needs too.
Sure, they're special needs too. We need to make sure that our AP programs are continuing to fulfill the needs that we have there. If we have students who are accelerating out of those programs, we need to make sure that we have partnerships with colleges and universities so we can send them out there to continue their education. If we grow too big for, there's for us, for this, if we, if we as a classroom grow too, if our students aren't big enough for the classrooms, we should send them elsewhere. And I know we have partnerships with FSU and elsewhere to send them off when they want more education. So it's really about balancing all the needs of our students and making sure that everybody's getting an equal and equitable education for, from the town of Milford. And I think that every student is getting a really good education if they're coming here. I can say, at least I have.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because too many times when we talk about special needs, we're talking about kids who need help to get to the median. But the top 10%, they're special needs too.
Sure, and it's not right to like, you know, put somebody who, you know, is an advanced calculus student in a CP chemistry class. That's not gonna cut it for them. By about 15 minutes, and they're gonna be bored and like, you know, because they're not being stimulated enough. They're gonna become the class clown. Similarly, when some, when a student's in a classroom and it's too high above their head, they become the class clown, they act out. You're gonna have that sort of similar situation. And that's not fair to our students who know, who have a quicker pace of learning. And it's not fair to the students who need the slower pace of learning. So it really is about making sure that all our kids and all our students are getting their needs met. Not just the ones who need a little bit extra attention, but the ones who are accelerating and doing fantastic in their learning.
So now, if somebody comes to you and says, "Will my child get a good education in Milford?", how would you answer that?
I would answer that with yes. Your child would get a good education in Milford. I think we see it in the outcomes from our students. I had kids that I graduated with who were getting accepted into top schools, top schools around the country. And if Milford's not giving you a good education, I don't know how that's possible with your student body. With every school, we have some kids who aren't as high performing as others. We have some kids who need more specialized attention than others. But that's not to say that our top-performing kids aren't exactly where other towns' top-performing kids are.
And it's always interesting because what people ask is why are Milford MCAS scores lower than other towns?
The bimodal curve, yes, yes. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, fine. I'll explain it then. I guess, you know, when you, when you're in Milford, you have a whole different bunch of populations. You have kids like me, you have kids like Al, you have kids that need more attention when it comes to their learning. You have kids who are just learning English for the first time. And many, and these kids are expected to take standardized testing like MCAS. You know, you read a passage, you answer some questions about the passage, you write an essay, you do some math questions. I think there is even a biology concept for the high school kids that they have to pass to be eligible for graduation. And because of the type of students that we have in Milford, our scores may not look as good as the towns around us. But when you look at the kids who are higher performing, their scores are just as good as those other towns' scores. Milford has high needs. We just talked about it. We have high special education. We have high English language learners. We have high, low-income kids. When a student like that's coming to school, there's a lot going on with them. And the results of like one MCAS test, I don't think does us as a district justice as to how smart and how good our students are. If I just landed here in Milford from Brazil, and I'm speaking Portuguese, and I walk into school and I now need to take my English MCAS my first or second week, you might get some doodles on there and some pictures that I drew. I might try and color in the bubbles, but it's, I'm not seriously taking that test because how can I read English? I'm gonna try my best. I'm a good kid. You know, I'm not, I'm not getting into fights at school. I'm going to my classes. The teachers, you know, like me, I'm quiet and shy or whatever. But you know, that one test, that one day, I didn't do so good. And I don't think it's fair to look at our students in our district in the terms of what does this one score from this one day show. If you're looking into college admissions, which was happening there, a lot more schools nowadays are allowing you to waive your SAT scores. Can you imagine if like your kids, how many times did your kids take the SATs?
I can't even remember.
I took them two, three times maybe. If I, I, it's great that we as a society here in this country are at the point where it's like, the score of a test from one date isn't telling the whole story, and that's not the entire picture of a student. I think it's just more or less educating the public as to that's the, as to that's the case as well. I know there's a lot of parents now who have seniors who are like, you're still taking your SATs. They were, I think the MCAS were optional for a little bit during COVID. My cousin was very upset when he had to go to school and take the MCAS because, you know, his mother thought it was important for the colleges to see. Maybe a very old-school kinda way of thinking, but you know, colleges are actually moving away from looking at those scores and saying, "This tells me everything I need to know about this kid." It really doesn't. Let's look at their extracurriculars. Let's look at them as a student as a whole. Let's see what they're bringing to the table in the community. Let's see what kinda work they're doing outside of school. One test, one day, doesn't tell the whole picture. And I think it's unfair to look at us as a district, or any student individually in particular, and judge them on that one score from that one day.
And I think there's certain kids who you knew took tests very, very well, and other kids who didn't. So if you're only looking at one aspect of an entire person, it just doesn't seem to be as good of an indicator as a holistic approach.
That's why grades are like an average. When you get a classroom grade, it's, it's part, like, you know, percent of it is your tests, percent of it is participation, homework, assignments, stuff like that. And, you know, I might be a bad test taker, but if I'm showing up to class every day, and I'm trying my best on my homework, and I'm participating, and I'm raising my hand and asking questions and all that sort of stuff, I might not be a good test taker, but I'm gonna pass that class. And that's really what matters, I think.
So now, your second opportunity was facilities. Tell me your opinion of what we need in facilities.
So first and foremost, the district has made it very clear that we need a new school. Yes, a new school's coming. We're continuing to file statements of interest with the state to try and get state funding for a new high school. 'Cause I don't know, do you know how much a new school costs to build?
Well, it depends.
I know Woodland was a few years ago, so just add some more money on top of that pile.
Oh no, you can't even compare.
Plus, it's a high school, so we can't compare that. Yeah.
Gut feel to renovate the Milford High School? Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty million?
Let me call Zach up real quick and see if we have that lying around.
Yeah.
We don't. I wish we did. I know Milford's a very wealthy community, and we are very wise with our money and where we put it and how we invest it. Hundred and fifty million dollars, we don't have that. And I'm wise enough as a school committee member to not expect our town to pay that.
But to build a new one, RJ, is $250.
Sure. I mean, I can't tell you what's going to happen today as you renovate or rebuild. There's a lot more stuff that has to be taken for any kind of commitment like that to happen. I understand that renovation might be more feasible than rebuilding because with a rebuild, the question becomes, where do we put over 1,000 kids? When we redid Brookside, I remember there was like, you know, some friends from Brookside and Memorial, and they threw some in Woodland, and they might, may or may not have had a module someplace.
We built half a school. When you add up how many classrooms we put in Memorial, what we did with the high school where the parks department was, the modulators, and that was for 300 total kids. I don't know where we'd put 1,300.
There's, I really, I mean, I would love for somebody to prove me wrong and show me where we can put them, but I really doubt that there is a space where we can put them. When we redid Brookside, you know, let's talk about the size of the student for a second. When we did Brookside, these were little kindergartens and like, you know, second graders that we were like, you know, putting in the modules. It's easy to maybe take something that's little and put it in a place that's little temporarily. But these are big high school students. Have you seen the football players? They're bigger than me. We can't really just toss them all into a bunch of, you know, module classrooms and Thurmond, Woodland, and Brookside because, let's face it, they're not gonna fit there, and these schools are already at capacity. So our facilities are really a need that we have. We have to update, we have to renovate or rebuild Milford High School. That's the biggest thing that we have to do as a district. And then we can look at our other schools and what we can do there. I know there's talk about Stacy maybe being next, the next 10 years, 15 years or so.
Stacy, well, figure it this way. We have five schools in Milford. The average lifetime is 40, 50 years, so it's every 10 years, minimum. You gotta plan to either renovate, major renovation, or build new. And the thing with the high school, where could you put it anyway, except maybe Asylum Street?
I live on the Lurker Road. My neighbors will not like me if I do that.
Well, it's not exact.
And plus, it's like so far away from like the rest of the town, I feel. If you live over by like, you know, Stop and Shop, and like, the house is over there, Ferguson, I don't know what those streets are, over there, like behind the hotel. That's gonna be a long commute to get to you, to get from your house to Asylum Street every day.
And think about running all those buses up Route 140. 'Cause you certainly can't run them up Ridgewood, you know, Bowden Drive and all.
They're gonna be battling it out with the Amazon trucks.
Be worse, how many there would be. So you know, there's the whole point of what would it cost? 'Cause even if we do a renovation, we're estimating it's gonna add $7 million a year to the budget. That's a lot of money to add, you know. And a new high school, the SBA has made it clear they won't pay for cafeteria, um, not cafeteria.
Auditorium and a pool.
Auditorium and pool.
Those are two main staples that our school has. And when I was a freshman and a sophomore in gym class, we were all required to take gym swimming. It's incredible that we as a district have this, have this facility to be able to offer swim classes to our community after school and then the weekends, to offer our, our students that who's attending phys ed to be taking swim classes. We don't have to bus our swimmers out to other towns, or YMCA, or another pool somewhere for them to practice. They get to just practice at Milford High School. The auditorium, we have a fantastic music program in Milford. We have a fantastic theater and arts program at Milford High School. They use that space almost on the daily for rehearsals and programs and everything. As nice as that auditorium is, and as successful as that music and arts program is, I don't know how successful it would be if we had to make a creative move at Milford High School as we did at Memorial for a cafe gym auditorium kinda thing. And that might just be me, and my way of thinking, I went to a school with like, you know, the auditorium and the pool, but to me, that's also what makes Milford, Milford. And I don't wanna lose those things if we have to rebuild.
Plus, you'd be losing square footage because the allocation of how many square feet per child that the SBA, the school building administration, would sanction is a lot smaller than what we have already at Milford High.
And then what's Milford High School gonna become? Another Amazon facility in town? What are we gonna do with that building? I mean, I mean, we as a town just figured out what to do with one school building that we had as surplus. We're gonna have to then decide what to do with another surplus of a building, this time being the gigantic fortress that is Milford High School? I don't know how that's gonna go.
But see, what you just said is profound. Milford High is a fortress. Those walls, it's a bunker. Yes, we have to renovate everything and the electronics, but those walls aren't going anywhere.
Yeah, no, we're not knocking that thing down.
Yeah, so, and then after that, you start looking at the other buildings. Now, I've heard thoughts of expanding Milford High School, adding in the eighth grade or something so that you could take some of the pressure off Stacy. Any ideas on that?
This is like maybe the second or third time that I've only heard this idea before. It's a relative new idea to me. It's not one that I would, that would, that would overrule. I know other school districts have eighth grade kinda as like a junior high to high school. That, that, that option is definitely, that option should definitely be on the table and a part of the discussion as to where we go. There's a lot of things that we could do. The one thing that I, one other idea that I think I did hear is like something like maybe like kindergarten, preschool, and memorial, and then, and then first and second at Brookside, or some other shuffling like that. I know that shuffling the grades slash redecor, redist, this is another conversation that I wanna maybe get into. I'll, I'll jump into this for a second. Redistricting, have you, do you know about redistricting with the schools?
Go ahead, tell us.
Okay, so there is something going on between Memorial and Brookside right now, where Brookside is the bigger school out of the two when it comes to K to two. Yet while Brookside is the bigger the school, Memorial has a larger population. And not only does Memorial have a larger population, their population has more EL, sped, and, and low-income kids, those high-needs kids that we talk about. A few years ago, before Kevin McIntyre became superintendent, they tried to basically set it so more kids were getting sent to Brookside and less kids were going to Memorial for the sizing issue. And they kinda redrew the lines in town as to where, as to where that breakpoint is, where the kids who will go to Memorial go, and where the kids who go to Brookside go. And it's kind of impossible to, as a town, to predict where new students and new kids and new families will just pop up and spring up. And instead of making what we wanted to happen, which was to have Brookside be the bigger school because it can handle more kids, the opposite effect happened in like more kids are going into Memorial who have higher needs. And so literally, hallways and closets and broom closets are being converted at Memorial into specialized classrooms and EL classrooms. And I don't think that's the best place for our students to be. Is it okay if maybe like some support staff and a teacher have an office in a broom closet? Maybe. But to stick 10, 15 kids in a broom closet who just, for the first time, are learning English, or who need specialized, special needs services, is that gonna impact their education and learning?
Of course it is.
Maybe. Yeah, maybe it would. Maybe it would. So I, so a conversation, conversations are being had every school committee meeting as to state facilities, what we're doing, what we're changing, what we're updating, where our needs are. And one piece of the discussion that I've been wanting to have more is like the redistricting of our elementary schools, to try and balance off the numbers and make it.
But now, help me understand, RJ, 'cause years ago, we went through this whole redistricting. Our schools, from one end to the other, are a mile apart. So it's not like you're shipping somebody way over, a lot longer of a bus ride if they're going to Memorial versus Brookside. It can't be two minutes, you know, difference, or half a mile difference?
It's really not. It's really not. It's, I, I don't know what redistricting's gonna look at. It's more conversations that I wanna have with Kevin and the rest of the school committee when that time comes to have this discussion more seriously. But, you know, when you look at the numbers of the students and the size of the buildings, it's clear to me at least, when I look at the enrollment numbers and what both schools are having to accomplish, it's clear to me that like Memorial needs to be, its population needs to be shifted over a little bit to balance off.
And if you said it was leveling, I would understand what that means. Bigger space, more kids. Well, you got more kids here, move some over.
Yeah, that's a smart thing. That, that's what I, that's one thing that we wanna see happen.
But when they talk about redistricting, it feels like, oh my God, you're gonna be sending.
We probably need to market what it's, what it actually is more than redistricting. But that's the terminology that the school department's given me when I've asked about shifting the line of the school.
The word. I remember the last time people were talking about the dramatic change from Woodland to Brookside. And I said, guys, it's half a mile apart. You don't put your brakes on for more than 10 seconds, you're.
There's one red light.
Yes.
That's it. It's one red light and a fork in the road. That's it.
But I think a lot of it too is memory. I mean, when I was a kid, Memorial, oh my God, how lucky you are to go to Memorial. It has a gym. It had lockers. You know, West Street School, Olive Street School, all the schools we went to had nothing. And now, I mean, a lot of people still remember Woodland, the old Woodland.
I went to the old Woodland. I had, Mr. Longo was on one side of the classroom, and Mrs. DeVito was on the other side of the classroom. Mrs. Guida was on one side of the classroom, Mrs. Olaf was on the other side of the classroom.
Up the little stairs for Chuckie.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's when they had like the two classrooms in like the one room, when they wanted to do that classroom setup theory when they rebuilt that in the seventies.
And they had to give Chuckie, Mr. Longo air conditioning 'cause it was so hot.
Yes, the one room that had air conditioning. I loved Mr. Longo's air conditioning. That was my favorite.
You know, so it's always amazing when you start looking at memory. You know, that people think of, well, Memorial, that's a, that's the premium school. No, it isn't. None of these schools are so far apart, or the resources available from one are shared by the other. So where do you see us going? The high school first, probably Stacy?
Not to put anything in stone, but well, to put one thing in stone, yes, definitely the high school next. Probably Stacy next, maybe Memorial next, maybe Brookside, then Woodland, if we wanna talk about each school's gonna have the 10-year phase out. We just did Woodlands, and Woodland's about like, what, 50 years away?
Forty-ish, yeah.
Forty, 50 years away. But even that, even now, when you look at Woodland as a school, yes, it just went online. It just became a part of the district, and we just opened it up. But even right now, that school's almost at capacity. Milford's growing so fast. I know the first time I came on, I told you the enrollment numbers, and you questioned me going, that makes no sense. Milford gains one student a year. And I'm like, maybe, but here's the numbers that I'm looking at. And like, over time, it's kinda became like, okay, yeah, this, it's insane growth, but that really is the number.
No, no, for the first 40 years.
One student per year, right?
One student per year average. 'Cause class of '74, first class out of Milford High, was 222 students. Five, six years ago, we were 265. But then all of a sudden, we started gaining 200. I mean, right now, we have what, 40?
Forty-five hun, over 4,500, the last school committee update that we got, yeah.
I mean, that's phenomenal growth. And I mean, I'm happy that we've been able to accommodate the kids. I think the state is finally waking up to, the term I heard that made most sense to me was from our representative, Brian Murray, when he said, "Milford is a gateway town." It's not a gateway city. You know, it's not New Bedford, Fall River, but it's got a lot of the same needs. And we were just trying to make do, 'cause as we looked, Chapter 70 wasn't going up. But our needs were, and we had to put in town money. I mean, the first, if you look 10-year cycle, the first four or five years, the town was continuously outpacing Chapter 70. Chapter 70 would go up 1%, 2%, and the school budget would go up 6%. The last couple of years is flip-flopped. I mean, you know, my heart stopped when I heard the school committee needed 9% increase. It's like, where are we gonna get the money? But then, Chapter 70 came through with over 9%. So hopefully, those numbers will hold, 'cause the need won't go away.
No, the need's not gonna go away. And I think the state's finally waking up to what the needs of a community like Milford is. And it revamped its Chapter 70 formula, more or less to say, to accommodate what Milford's needs are. The reason why Milford's going to get about 6, maybe 7 million dollars in additional Chapter 70 money is because the state's looking at us going, okay, you guys have a lot of English language learners, a lot of special needs students, a lot of low-income kids. Well, as a town, as a school system, that requires additional resources, staffing, everything that I kinda talked about, the needs that we have as a district. And because they recognize that that's the kinda kids we're serving, that these are the needs that we have, they, they've given us more resources to, to tend to those needs, which is, I think, a remarkable change from like what Milford was getting from the state age. I know my, one of my first times I was here, I said the state should be contributing more because of our needs. And somebody somewhere must have been listening because here we are, walking into the finance committee going, "Looks like we're getting projected 6, 7 million dollars from the state?" Never happened before. Incredible. We'll take that.
And if we're lucky, that'll carry for another year or two. You know, we heard from... You know, we heard from our representative that. The three areas you mentioned were the target areas for the legislature. They wanted to help schools that have high special needs, high low income groups. And high English language learners. Well, Milford rang the bell all three.
Yeah, no, I I'm basically hearing the legislators la- relations say, we're coming out of towns like Milford because those are the towns that are the most neediest.
And thank god because we've been fortunate over the years. But it was getting tight. I was starting to get a little nervous when you started hearing about two hundred extra kids coming. I mean, that's two, three million bucks just right there.
It's a whole nother grade level when I was a kid.
You know, it's a whole nother school. I don't know, Memorial has what two fifty or something? Brookside has three hundred. You had two hundred some kids. That's like a whole nother school in there. Now, a lot of people don't understand. How much extra help the kids in Milford, a lot of them need. My understanding is the free lunch program is up to like fifty percent or close.
Yeah, about fifty percent of the kids who are attending our schools is enrolled in the free lunch program. That that's the real number. That's a real life number. And that's something that we as a district and not only as a district and a town, but I think Milford as a town and community. Need to really start looking at and understanding more of because when I was a kid, I would I would remember getting sent with two fifty for lunch every day. Um and it breaks my heart that there's kids out there who whose whose families can't afford the lunch every day. And if they can't afford the lunch at school every day, that makes me think what else can they not afford and. It's really great that Milford has the staff and the people that we have who have such understanding as to where these kids are coming from. That we help them out as much as we can to give them the free lunches. Another number that I know is. Real and that I want the community to like really know and think hard about is that we have almost. I think it's over sixty students in Milford High School who are basically homeless.
In Milford?
In Milford that Lisa Kincaid is aware of. And that's the phrase that we were given at school committee one night, like these are the numbers of kids that we're aware of. And the only reason why we're aware of these is because circumstances happened, staff asked some questions and realizations were made.
You know, there's an angel named Lisa because.
She does so much. She does so much good.
Couple of years ago that was coming to Milford High for a night class. And it was a mother and three kids. It was amazing to me that she had walked from one end to the other end of town to come to this class with her three little kids. And the coat she had, it was more of a sweater thing. It was unbelievable. I was like, how are these kids not freezing? And I called, this is eight o'clock at night, we called Lisa up and somehow she opened up her treasure trove. And out came coats for these kids. That to me is Milford.
Yeah.
You know, that somebody would go out of their way. Because, you know, say the clock at night, she's not on the clock anymore.
No.
But the minute you told her that there was a Milford kid hurting, there's not a question. It's like, okay, let's take care of them.
Yeah, and that's what we do. I mean, like. I don't wanna ever see a day where Milford has to shut down their free lunch program. I don't wanna ever have to deny a kid food, lunch. In our school buildings. We don't, we can't, we don't have to do that. I don't wanna see us having to like charge, you know, we hear stories from other towns in other states. Where kids are getting sent home bills for unpaid lunches. And they're not gonna be allowed to take out lunches unless these bills are paid for them. No, yeah, this this really happens in other states and I'm glad. Milford is not a community that um does that and that we take care of.
Can you ever imagine?
Carla Turtle sending me a bill, yeah, maybe from my Oliva's.
Not even sending a bill, but seeing a hungry kid and saying, sorry, you can't have lunch. I wouldn't wanna be the person that stood between Carla and a hungry kid.
She'd sooner sneak that kid a bog than say no to him.
Right. But again, there's Milford. The Olivas are Milford, whether that's. The Oliva Fund for Cancer Treatment, Carla squeezing the food. You know, it's like I remember a few years ago when the um request came, the emergency request came to the finance committee, capital subcommittee. That Carla needed a new freezer and fridge. There was no question.
We're gonna say no and have like the food get poisoned for the kids because they're not at safe temperature. Yeah, we're gonna give the fridge, yeah.
But it was like, you're thinking about it and you're saying, if Carla's telling us she really needs it. What am I gonna say? I'm gonna question Carla on food prep?
Just go take an old one from Oliva's. Can't you just take one of those?
Now, as we start looking, the third opportunity you mentioned was staff. Talk to me about Milford educational staff.
Our edu- like I said earlier, our educational staff is some of the best in the world. They're top notch. We have people with masters and PhDs working in our schools. Which is incredible that somebody like, you know, Dr. Pontempo chooses to work in Milford. Versus maybe teaching at a college somewhere because he's qualified to do that. Um what we need is more of them. When we look at class sizes in Milford, and when I say class sizes, I mean like, you know, um. History class by Mr. Molinari in period A. Um that class could maybe have up to like thirty-two, thirty-three kids in it, all trying to learn about the French Revolution. It's not the best to be teaching lessons about the French Revolution to. Thirty-two kids, let alone teaching anything to a group of thirty-two people because it's very hard to have that. One-to-one kind of interaction when you have thirty-two people in front of your room. Um the schools have a class size limit that we wanna stake onto. Um and in many cases, that class size limit is higher than where we want to. So. Um we just need more staff, whether it's history teachers and science teachers. So the specialized teachers like EL staff to special needs staff, um the high school. Back in October, the principal came to us with the red bells bling saying that we have. A giant need at Milford High School for an additional EL teacher right this second. Um and there were members of my committee who felt this was a more unusual request for a s- for a principal to be coming to us. Right after the start of the school season, after we just given them, you know, fifty-seven million dollars in a budget, say we need more staffing, but. How can we predict that all of these kids are gonna come to Milford and that this is what their needs are gonna be? We can't predict the enrollment. That's not something that we can predict. But at the same time, we have to be able to work with Josh and the town and find a way to. Properly educate these kids and if we have to fund the position, you know, midway through a year to get the job done. It's it's a tough call to make, but that's something that we ended up doing this year because the need was so great at the high school. To have another EL teacher there in the building teaching the kids.
Well, I think it's hard for people to understand when the school committee comes out and says. We need twenty new teachers. And they do the math and they say, okay, with benefits, it's about ninety, hundred grand average a teacher after a few years. You're getting two hundred new kids and you want twenty teachers. That's ten kids per teacher. But it isn't cuz when you factor that forty or fifty percent of those kids are special needs, whether it's. A s- to uh what we would normally think of special needs or ELL. Some have IEPs.
These are kids that are sitting in a twenty, thirty person class. They might be sitting in like a more eight to twelve size class. So, yeah, your your math coming out going, two hundred kids, twenty teachers, ten, ten a kid. Yeah, that's right, because again, that's where Milford's needs currently sit.
But that's the hard part for people to understand cuz they divide by twenty-five and they say you should need ten teachers, not twenty. And they don't understand that some of these, they used to call them unfunded mandates, but I can't yell at the state cuz they're sure funding their mandates to us.
Sure, yeah.
Today.
Yeah.
Let's hope it continues.
And maybe that's a part of us on the school side who've who haven't. Reached out enough to the community to educate them and let them know exactly what's going on in their buildings and what's happening and what the problems that they were dealing with. Because there's people like you and me who like, you know, before I really started like, you know, deeply looking and thinking into about these school committee issues. You know, I didn't, I had no idea there were like sixty homeless kids in my backyard, not literally, but like, you know what I mean? Um. So, yeah.
Even words like that, the fact that our little town has sixty.
A lot of these families are like living out of the hotels that are in Milford, just struggling to get by.
That's amazing to me cuz you you read about it. You see it, it's Mass and Cass in Boston. And you immediately say, well, that's over there. Couldn't happen in our little town.
Oh, it's always it couldn't happen here, but yeah, if you look hard enough, it is.
And you know, we've been fortunate that the decades I've been a town meeting member. I've never seen town meeting turn down what's needed for our kids. You know, we're lucky that way. But now you're telling me we got sixty kids that are homeless. That's unbelievable. And I mean, just educating kids who are homeless. You can't tell them, go home and do this on your computer. If they don't have a home, chances are they don't have a computer. Amazing. Really sends shivers up my spine, you know, to think that it's happening right here and are we doing enough for them?
We're doing a lot for them and I definitely think there's always more that we can do. And we can't just stop at where we are now. We gotta keep going and I wanna be a part of the people that get to keep going.
Talk to me about school choice.
What do you wanna know about school choice?
I don't understand why it's so inverted. You know, between the kids leaving for charter schools, leaving for specialized schools or just leaving. It's a huge number going out. It's over a million dollars a year. You know, if you add in the charter and everything, it's like three point something million a year that Milford. I can't say pays, but the state deducts, so essentially we're paying for it.
Right.
Why do people leave Milford?
I want to know the answer to that as well. If, here's the thing. I went through Milford schools and if I'm lucky enough to buy a house in Milford and have a family here, I'm gonna want my kids to go to Milford schools. I know what they did for me and I know what they can do for our kids in town and I wanna see them go there if I get to have kids. Um I know in some cases there might be super duper specialized. Special needs that these kids have where they might have to go to someplace that's more equipped to handle their specialized needs. That Milford just can't do and in that case it's like, okay, go ahead.
But that's like Bobby Littleton's Evergreen Center.
Yeah.
Set up for kids who need constant supervision.
Then there's kids like me who are saying, yeah, Milford's nice, but I'm gonna go over this town next door and over here. And that's what actually kind of bothers me because like there's nothing that different about the education they're getting over there that they can't get here. Um I really sort of feel like it comes down to a perception issue of Milford and its schools. When it comes to certain kids leaving, I think that there's a lot of kids who are leaving because there's needs over here that they wanna go to. There might be some kids who are leaving because this school might have a better lacrosse program and I know in New England lacrosse is very big, so. If they wanna get a good chance going to college and they might go someplace that has a better lacrosse program, okay, but like. A normal kid like me choosing to go to next town over because of the way their their schools might look. I have a little bit of a problem with that because that's not the way that I kind of think and I wish that we could, because people look at Milford. And the diversity that we have, I look at it as a positive. I went to Worcester State University and Worcester. In a way looks like Milford where there's people from all different backgrounds and cultures there. If I didn't go to a school like Milford, I don't know how I would have been prepared to have walked into that environment and know how to connect with these kids. Um and that's just an opportunity that's being taken away from certain kids when they're being choice out of Milford. For the reasons of what the school looks like and I wish people could see the value that we as a district have. By just having that in our schools because in this ever globalizing world, you're not just gonna be able to stand in a room with everybody that. Looks and sounds and talks like you. You gotta be able to learn how to work with all different types of people from all different kinds of backgrounds and. That's something that Milford as a town can teach our kids that other towns next to us aren't able to and that's something that I really take a lot of pride in.
What do you say to parents who are worried that having so many low income, high needs pe- kids? Will lower the level of education that their child gets?
I don't think that would be the case. When it comes to EL kids, special needs kids. They're in their own programs, learning at their own pace. The higher ed kids, they had their AP classes. And we're balancing off where the needs are. Yes, we have needs over here with the kids who need more help and more attention, more um specialized instruction. And we have these kids over here who are accelerating in math and biology and are taking all the APs in the world. We are not forgetting about those kids and we're not leaving those kids behind and we're not leaving these kids over here behind. We're taking them all with us and. That's all we can really do as a district is make sure that every kid is getting the best educational experience possible for them. And I think we're accomplishing that for the most part.
Did a better job at publishing our results. Cuz at the end of the day, RJ, you have a John dist view. I have a John dist view.
I'm on the school committee. I'm supposed to have a John dist view, yeah.
But I'm just saying, somebody could say, oh, yeah, you're from Milford, so you really don't look objectively at how good your kids are. And I sit there and say, well, we're not the judges. It's the colleges. Who could care less about Milford or any town around it. The colleges are the ones that decide whether or not our kids make the grade. And we've got kids going to some of the best schools in the country. If they weren't getting a good education in Milford, they wouldn't be. You know, so I kind of wish we found a way of letting people know. How well our kids do and once they're there, they stick. It's not like we're getting them in and then they flunk out. Kids safe in Milford schools?
I certainly think they're safe. I know Milford as a community have done, has done a lot. To make sure that there's proper resources in place to make sure the kids are safe for in case anything happens. Um and I appreciate the work that we've all done to basically keep our kids safe. Um. I have never heard of any kind of major incident happening in our schools. I have never been made aware of anybody who. Honestly feels super duper unsafe with walking into our buildings and like super fearful like something is going to happen to them. Um. And I thank god for that every day that that's the case in our community. Other communities can't say the same. Um but I think the way that Milford is, as not only a community but as a school system, we've done all the due diligence that we can to keep them. Safe in our buildings and I think that there's no other place in our community safer than our school buildings.
Well, we invested six hundred thousand dollars a few years ago. In a Milford SWAT, I can't use the word, but it's a SWAT team.
It it's, yeah, yeah.
You know, and the thing that threw me, and I remember looking at our chairman at the time, Chris Moore, and saying, god help us. If we turn this down and something happens. Cuz the statistic that we heard was we can have a full SWAT team in Milford from the region within forty-two minutes. But most of the school problems are over an eighteen. So it kind of hit us to say, wait a minute, we gotta do something better than that. We want the. Law enforcement people we count on to be there while it's happening, before it's happening, you know, not after. So, you know, it's always a question. You think kids are safe in Milford?
I always felt safe in our schools. Everybody in my family that's gone there has always felt safe. Um I have no reason to believe that our schools are unsafe at this moment, yeah.
The topic that I've avoided because it's everything we hear every minute of the day.
Oh, no.
Covid nineteen.
Oh, no, covid, 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 oh, no.
You know.
We really didn't talk about it. It's been like almost an hour. That's incredible.
I intentionally kept it.
Okay.
I didn't wanna hear the word Omicron, Omicron, you know, Delta, Du. Are we doing the right thing by our kids with our covid programs?
Yeah, right now our kids are back in school. They're there full time. Yes, they might be wearing masks right now, but they're back in the building. And they're getting in-person instruction and that's all, that's one of those things that last year at this time, I was. Wa- I wanted nothing more of. I wanted, yeah, I understand that kids, students learn best when they're in the class and they're learning in person. It's very hard for high income kids to or low income. It's very hard for high-income kids to, or low-income kids, sorry. To sit at home, have a good internet connection, good computer, good wifi and everything, good camera, to go online and be on Zoom every day. Let alone what might also be happening in that house, like it's insane to sit there and like learn that way. I know a lot of students and families really struggled with remote, remote learning for a long time and they powered through it and. What's important now is to keep our kids in the school and, and, and safe, I know in a cup, we're filming this. What's today's date, fifteenth, fourteenth, sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sometime in the middle of February.
February sixteen.
And it is very possible that by the end of February, um, masks will be optional for the students at the high school. And that's something that I know has been a long time coming for the community, I can tell you that week after week I was getting. Emails from parents asking us, you know, to lift the mask mandate and everything else, and when it comes to me personally. I think it was the right thing for us as a community to have done to make sure that like, you know, everybody going to those buildings are masked. But also, it's also a state recommendation, so we can't really like say, good, it's not a suggestion. It's a mandate from the state, we gotta wear these masks, they're not suggesting masks, say, hey, you want, no, no, we have to. We tried to go on the opera, off-ramp for masking, uh, Milford High School was at a point. Where I think we're over ninety percent vaccinated and we wanted to possibly go optional masks um after the Christmas break. But because of the last surge that just happened, that got pushed off and. We're hoping that come the end of February, we can be masked optional in the high school. And I know that's great news for a lot of our families and a lot of students who are excited to get rid of those masks. But honestly, this day wouldn't be happening if we didn't persevere with remote learning, if we didn't keep those masks on while we're in the buildings. Getting reallocated back into those schools, so I think we did the right thing during covid. I would love to just blink my eyes and wake up tomorrow and have it be a non-issue anymore, but. Just because covid's gone, the virus is, you know, we're living with the virus, it's not gone, but like, you know. Whatever we're living with, we're all vaccinated, we're taking the right protocols, there's still the. Impact that it had education on our students, we can't forget that for. About a year, they were outside of their schools, they were remote learning, they didn't have social interaction with their classes. Just because covid's over with the quarantining and the remote learning, doesn't mean that the, that the effects of covid. Aren't still present with our students, um, both educationally and, and, and psychologically. And those are places where we need to focus our attention on. To basically bring them back to where they have to, because there's many kids who are right now maybe a graded level or two below where they should be. And I don't wanna blame remote learning and covid for that, but you know, that's, that's what happened, I think.
Well, you know, when I hear we, we don't want, you said, I'd rather not, of course not, I'd rather not be vaccinated. But mumps, measles, rubella, I mean, I was. I bet if you asked me, do I want, when I was a kid, do I want to be harpooned, I probably wouldn't have said, sure. Do I want, I mean, I felt like a pincushion this year with the booster shot, the shingles shot, you know, you go. Uh, remember, I'm old.
I keep forgetting, I keep thinking like you're forty-nine like the first time I met you.
Yeah, no, that, that dog doesn't hunt anymore, but you know, you start thinking about it. When people say, I'd rather not, of course not, none of us would, I'd rather have world peace, doesn't mean it's reality. You know, so I have a hard time sometimes understanding, all of us that went through the Milford School System were vaccinated. There's probably one outlier or two because of medical reasons, but in general, we all were vaccinated at one point. I don't know that we're ever gonna get away from, well, look at the flu. Every year, we take one of the three strains, change it and hope we pick the right one. If you had. The magic wand and you could change one thing in the school system, what would it be?
I mean, some, some easy answers, a new buildings, a new staff, uh, you know, um. One thing that was passed over in the budget book for January that we just sat through the meeting of. Was the after-school bus pilot program. Um, when I first ran, um, if you might remember the first time I ran, my, my yard science had school buses on them. And the idea for that is that like I wanted to possibly one day see a late bus program in the middle of public school systems. Um, our schools are great with offering a bunch of after-school extracurricular activities. Our staff and teachers are great about staying late after school for extra help sessions with their kids if they're struggling before a test or. Or whatever you may have you, um, sports are big after school, but with a community like Milford, you know. We just talked about it, a lot of our kids are low-income kids, those are people with parents who have two, three jobs. They're not around to, you know, pick up their kids after school, they might not have grandparents or aunts in town who can just drop off everything and go pick them up. For us, for our kids to have equal opportunity to add these after-school programs like everybody else does, I think that we need a way to get them from point A to point B safely. At winter time, the sun goes away like four-thirty at night, if I'm walking up Purchase Street at five o'clock at night. As your fourteen-year-old son, eh, it might not be the safest place for me, Purchase Street, fourteen years old at night, nah, I don't know. Um, so I think it would be wise for us as a district to have an after-school bus program. For our students to take advantage of, so they can stay after school to get extra help, have extra curriculum activities and not just call it a burden, but to take the. Hassle of picking your student, of picking your kid up and bringing them home, just off the plates of our parents, not to say like that's not your job of a parent, like. Pick up your kid, but some of these parents are having crazy work hours, this is the type of student that we have.
Program, we have help with that.
The what?
The MWR TV.
So you have to be, I, I had that same question, but you have to be a, you have to be over sixteen, I believe, to ride the bus by yourself. So if you're a freshman or a sophomore in high school and your cutoff date was like, you know, in March, you're the youngest in your grade. You can't take that bus by yourself, it's weird, you have, there, there's an age limit to ride that bus.
Way around that.
There might be a way around that, but I also know that when you drive by Milford High School right now, in our parking lot, you see a whole bunch of buses that we just bought. I would love to see those buses on the road, maybe we could use those buses for an after-school pilot program and see what it's like and see if the. Kids and parents would like it, that's a conversation we'll have to have, I know it was passed over in the budget book, that's something that we are in discussion of maybe having. If I had a magic wand, I would love another building, a new one, some more teachers, but. Hey, it'd be really fun to see an after-school bus program, I would have loved having that as a student there.
RJ, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Al, if you're from Milford, I think you should vote for me because my determination and dedication is unstoppable. I ran for this position, position three times and I got knocked down a couple of times in my road here. But that didn't stop me from continuing to work and earning a seat on the school committee. I'm entrusted to do the job and I'm currently doing the job and I would like to continue to do the job, there's a whole bunch that we just started working on. That we won't see through completion, through fruition until the, until May. Or some of these projects I'm working on three to six years and having been there from this moment on, I wanna continue to see these projects and. Everything through to the end. And I would just like to continue to be on the school committee and working hard for everybody here, I think I worked hard to get there and I wanna continue and I hope that. Um, your viewers recognize the work that I put in and will give me a full term for three years to sit there and keep doing the work.
Thank you for everything you're doing and thank you for being one of the people that we all should admire, not just having an opinion. But stepping up and putting in time to help our kids. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate. But I'll beg you to vote, I mean, we've had school committee elections decided by thirteen votes. So anybody in Milford that tells me their vote doesn't count, you can talk to lots of people who've seen thirteen votes. Swing the school committee election and the school committee to me is the most important. Committee for any parent, I mean, by the time you get to high school, the kids get to high school, I'm lucky if I had an hour or two a night. With my daughters, the school committee decides what they do for six to eight hours and what's gonna mold them for the rest of their lives. So please, whether you go to the senior center, whether you go to the high school. There's many places to see these candidates, we're on YouTube, get to know the candidates. Find the one that you feel most comfortable with and vote for him or her. And as always, thank you for joining, thank you for everything you're doing, may God bless and may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, good night, all.